I'd like to call this, May 7th, meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Ms. Henry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Pearson?
Here.
Ms. Phillips?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Mugler?
Let the record show that all of our board members are present for tonight's meeting along with our Division Superintendent, Dr. Linda Shiflett, our School Board Attorney, Ms. Nancy Reeves, our School Board Clerk, Ms. Carolyn Bowers, and our Student Liaison, Ms. Jeray Bolton, who I am going to turn things over to, to get us started with some introductions.
Our invocation this evening will be given by Harry Lewis, a junior at Phoebus High School.
And I ask everybody to please, please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to lead in prayer.
Can you speak into that microphone there? You could lift, raise it up.
I'd like to lead in prayer. Dear heavenly Father, you are indeed the giver of all gifts, and we've come together on this day to seek your wisdom, guidance, courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberation and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our school system. We pray, Father, for our leaders to have the insight to lead with integrity, and that our decisions may reflect what is right and good. Please help us to make the decision that strive to be for the good of all students and families of Hampton City Schools. Finally, dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we say and do. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. I think that that was right on time. I think it's important that we remember that we're all here to put our students first. I'm going to ask you a few questions. So what kind of sports are you involved in at Phoebus?
I play football for Phoebus High School right now.
And what position do you play?
Defensive tackle.
Okay. Are you, do you know what college you're going to attend?
Yeah, I committed to Virginia Tech two weeks ago.
And what career goals do you have?
I plan on majoring in Communications at Virginia Tech.
Wow, well, we have a similar interest. Do you have anyone in the audience that you would like to introduce?
Yeah, Mr. Beverly. Mr. Alexis.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mugler, hold up.
Mr. Lewis, yeah.
All right, hold up, one second. You know I can't let you get away from that microphone, dude. I've been knowing Harry since he was a little boy.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, he's not a little boy anymore. Are you still wrestling?
No, I stopped.
You just grabbed on the football field now?
Yeah.
Send me a ticket to a game when you get up there.
I got you.
All right, dude.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Thank you so much. I think we needed that little shot in the arm tonight. Your invocation was spot-on. I really appreciate you coming and being with us. We are lucky tonight that we are going to have a little bit of musical entertainment. And I think it's musical. Okay, somebody's shaking their head, so I'm feeling affirmed. We have students tonight from Armstrong School for the Arts, and they're going to be performing two numbers for us. Keep 'em guessing and reflection. And we have students performing tonight, Sarah Silva-Arap, Joey Pendleton, Miracle Chadwick, Anna Spratt, Margaret Lively, Hannah Gray Edgar. And the School of Armstrong School for the Arts will be performing Mulan. And so I think we have some of those characters here with us tonight. They'll be performing on June 2nd at 6:00 PM, and I'm sure that they would be delighted if anyone here tonight would join in their audience for their performance. Just before we get started, can somebody tell me why the children have beards and mustaches?
The Chinese army decides to dress up as maidens and save the emperor from the hounds.
Okay, very well. All right, with that, take it away.
Mulan, I don't think I can play this song. I don't know how to feel.
Well, I guess it's your turn. Blink those eyes and work that fan.
No, we can't!
Oh, yes, you can. Find a girl inside man and keep 'em guessing. Walk the walk and talk up here.
Hit me like this.
That's better, dear. Think you found a new career. Keep 'em guessing.
Look, look, I'm small like a bluebird. Does this jeans song make me look fat?
How do you walk in these shoes?
Welcome to my world.
Hey, I think I'm getting it.
Me too, you know.
I date me.
Girl, this might just work.
Brush the blush up on your skin. Hide the stubble on your chin. Little last game, let 'em ride it. Keep 'em guessing.
That was awesome. I think, I'm looking forward to June 2nd to see the whole production. That was fun and fabulous, and some beautiful little voices there. Yes, Mr. Harper?
We have something called STEM in our system, science, technology, engineering, and math. I think we should add an A to it and make it STEAM, include the arts. Because that's just as important to these kids here as anything else.
So thank you very, very much to Armstrong School for the Arts for coming out tonight and sharing a little bit with us, giving us a little taste of your program. We're looking forward to hopefully getting over there on June 2nd to check it out. We do know that those children didn't drive themselves here tonight, so would the parents of the performers tonight, would you like to stand, please, and be recognized? Thank you so much for taking time out of your busy schedules to come and be with us Sorry, I'm getting a lot of sideline advice over here, and so I know that the principal from Armstrong School for the Arts is here, and some other staff members. Would you all please stand up and be recognized? All right, great. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. We're going to move on with our meeting and move to our recognitions. We'll have our, there she is, I was looking over here, but she's moved to my left. Our Executive Director of Marketing and Public Relations for Hampton City Schools, Ms. Diana Galata, will conduct our student recognitions and staff recognitions tonight. She'll be assisted by School Board Member, Mr. Dave Pearson.
Good evening. That's always a very difficult act to follow, but we have some great students and staff that we are recognizing tonight. First off, it's my pleasure this evening to recognize Mohammed Issa and Samantha Champion from the Spratly Gifted Center. If they would come forward. They are the only students from a Peninsula District School who won state awards in the Virginia PTA Reflections Contest. Mohammed won in the Film Production category for Believe, Dream, and Inspire. And Samantha won in the Dance Choreography category for Where Dreams Begin. Congratulations.
We're excited, we were at Phoebus, we heard that the two students received local recognition, and now tonight we're hearing that they won the state competition, and I remember seeing you and your entire family there. I think, your son, yes. So we have certificates of achievement from the Hampton City School Board, which congratulates Mohammed Issa and Samantha Champion for their state-level entry in the PTA Reflections Contest. And these certificates are signed by Martha Mugler, our School Board Chairman, and Linda Shiflett Superintendent, and we hope both students will continue to participate right on up through high school. Thank you.
And their Principal, Dr. Crum, is here as well. Anyone else here from Spratly? I am also pleased to recognize Victoria Goodwin and Crystal Harmon of Kickitane High They participated with the Phoebus High School students at the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America Conference at the state level. Both girls earned first place in the category of entrepreneurship. Each student also won a $1,000 scholarship to Johnson &amp; Wales, which is renewable annually. Congratulations.
So we have two certificates here, one for Crystal Harmon and one for Victoria Goodwin. Both students at Kickitane High School. It's an achievement award from the School Board congratulating both of you for your first-place position in the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America Conference in the category of entrepreneurship, signed by Martha Mugler, Chairman, and Linda Shiflett Superintendent. And when I heard about these recognitions, I started to think about how far we've come in recognizing so many students in so many different areas, and who would have thought many, many years ago that we'd have a certificate in entrepreneurship, which is very important? Congratulations.
We do have a few folks from Kickitane here and Phoebus. Congratulations. I'd like for Anna Montgomery of Phoebus High and Christopher Dobbins of Bethel High to come forward. They are part of a team of student engineers that has won a national competition to build and test designs for radiation shields for NASA's new Orion spacecraft. So these really are rocket scientists right here. Their winning design from Team RS, is it RS?
Ares.
Ares will be launched into space on Orion later this year. This uncrewed mission, designated Exploration Flight Test One, will be the first spaceflight test of the capsule that will one day carry astronauts to an asteroid and Mars. Anna and Christopher are members of the team representing the Governor's School for Science and Technology at New Horizons Regional Education Center. Congratulations to our rocket scientists. And you want to show us something? Why don't you tell us what, go ahead, you can come to the microphone and tell everyone what you want.
Well, the premise of the contest was to create some kind of radiation shield that fit inside a seven-by-seven-by-seven-inch cube and weigh less than seven pounds. And we actually built a test model made out of steel and polyethylene sheets. And you want to talk about the final model?
And our final model will be made of tantalum, tin, zirconium, aluminum, and polyethylene. It'll protect 10 decimeters from radiation during the first launch in December.
Wow.
This indeed is very exciting. The School Board visited the New Horizons Center recently, and we're informed about the competition, and we were told that you were headed for this national competition. So we're hoping that you would do well. So now we find out that you are actual winners in the NASA Exploration Design Challenge. So therefore, on behalf of Martha Mugler, our School Chairman, and Linda Shiflett Superintendent, we have a certificate for each of you for your hard work and dedication to a very exciting field, and hopefully we'll hear more about this in the years to come. And both are planning to be engineers, huh? Is that right? Okay, so fine, you already started. We have a certificate for Anna Montgomery from Phoebus High School and Christopher Dobbins from Bethel High School. Good luck.
We have a few administrators from Phoebus and Bethel here. Okay, so we're not only building rockets in Hampton City Schools, we're also building boats as well. A team of six students representing Hampton High School was one of four finalists in the 2014 Newport News Shipbuilding Apprentice School Society of Naval Architects and Marine Engineers Boat Design Competition. This is the first time a team from within HCS has earned this recognition. The team members would please come forward. Khan Nguyen, Peter Din, A. Zen, Dante Hall, Brandon Williams, and Kiara Corbin. Their design was called Hampton's Finest. And Mr. Myrick, come on up. I know you've been shy earlier, but we want you to come up. Mr. Myrick is their sponsor. This competition included more than 20 schools and more than 40 teams from throughout the area, and the purpose is to engage students' math, science, and creative abilities and introduce them to engineering, drafting, project planning, and leadership principles. Participating high schools formed student teams and worked independently to design the fastest and most maneuverable boat using the materials provided. This year, the boat was designed as a car-carrying ferry. Although they did not win the overall competition, their vessel will be built by the shipyard and given to Hampton High School. Mr. Myrick, did you want to say a few words?
First of all, thank you for honoring, this is, these are my rock stars here. Rock stars out of many rock stars here in the engineering program at Hampton High School. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge our stute principal over there, Dr. Grove, for coming in and supporting us. And also for our curriculum leader, Mr. Jesse White, who's been so supportive in the program. But all the credit goes to these guys here. They spent a lot of time after school designing this, and it's only fitting that the name speaks for itself. I think calling it Hampton's Finest was a blur on what it's, what it turned out to be. It not only represents Hampton High School, but it also represents the city of Hampton. Because this is the first, like she said, this is the first time that Hampton High has made it, actually competed. And there was like many, many schools from other associations, York County, Newport News, Williamsburg, that had several boats involved. And we only had one in design, and we made the finalist. So I give it to these guys here, these are the brainchild here. This is our future. This is our future. But I don't want to steal the mic, so I'll leave it at that, okay? We have a certificate for each student congratulating them. It's signed by Martha Mugler, our School Board Chairman, and Linda Shiflett Superintendent, congratulating them for this endeavor. As finalists in the 2014 Newport News Shipbuilding Apprentice School Society of Naval Architects and Marine Engineers, acronym SNAEM, Boat Design and Competition, and I'm going to ask Mr. Myrick to help me with handing these out. Thank you. Okay, Peter Din, he's not here. Dante Hall couldn't make it also. And last, but certainly not least, Khan Nguyen.
Congratulations. Now it is my pleasure to introduce Joan Davis, Coordinator of Professional Development, to recognize our Teachers of the Year.
It is exciting. On Thursday night, we had the Teacher of the Year banquet, and from that, three teachers were selected, an elementary, a middle, and a high school teacher. They're here tonight, and I want to introduce you. Normally, I have them come up one at a time, but I'd like to have all three come up at the same time. They've really bonded, and when I read their applications, it's like having the same person on each one of them. So first of all, elementary is Janef Irizary McKinney. She is from Armstrong. And next to Janef is Alexis Tharp. She is a science teacher at Phoenix. And Michelle Vinnie is a math teacher at Kickitane. So whirlwind time, they were, they were selected on Thursday night. They went to Kickitane High School on Monday afternoon and were interviewed by the selection team. The selection team is headed by Dr. Raymond Haynes, and then two other principals, and the past three Teachers of the Year. And I think all three of them are here, so if the three of them would please stand, Jessica and Shakisa and Lisa, would you please stand? These are our last three Teachers of the Year. And I also saw Tracy Pence, who was the Teacher of the Year, before them. If you would please stand. And Dawn Gerbing, who was the middle school teacher of the last, of last year. So I know they're here to support them, they know the feeling of what it's like to be on this stage and not know what's coming next. As I read through the applications, I was so impressed with all three of them. Each, every one of them talked about using innovative strategies in their classroom. And Michelle says that when things look like they're getting boring, it's time to change it up and do something. You might be taking a risk, may not even work, but you've got to keep kids engaged. All three of them said that. Then they talked about collaboration, how they wanted to work with other teachers. Janef went to the first-grade teachers at Armstrong because third graders had been studying ancient China and just seemed to want more. So with the first-grade teachers, they collaborated, they built this thing where they had it all the way down the hallway, they had architecture, they had food, they had music, they had dance, and all of the kids really got a lot about ancient China. When it comes to science, Alexis loves science, and so do her kids. They have very thoughtful discussions about why things are the way they are. Just like Michelle says in her math classes, I don't teach them how to do it, I teach them why things work in math. These three are the three that were chosen, and you saw that all the students who are up here tonight, it's because of the great teachers in Hampton City Schools that we have those things happen. So I am just so proud of all three of them, and what they told me is that they have bonded, that they want to be a team and go out and really be the ones that can talk about Hampton City Schools. So when you need a speaker, these three females are yours. They are like three sisters. I said, I think we just got triplets, and that's wonderful. So please remember all three of them. And at this time, we're going to announce the Teacher of the Year. And Mr. Pearson, if you would open this. And is somebody going to do a drum roll? There we go. The 2014-15 Teacher of the Year is Michelle Vinnie from Kickitane.
Thank you so much. It's a lot of great teachers in Hampton, everywhere, I'm looking at them. My, my math teacher from Phoebus High School, Mr. Service, is standing right over there. My principal, Dr. Henry, when I graduate from Phoebus is right there. These two ladies, we understand now that means we have a big job to motivate and inspire not only students and children, but also adults to be the best they can be and continue to keep Hampton City Schools shining, and we're going to be devoted to doing that. So we are all the Teachers of the Year for 2014, 2015. We thank you so much for the support, and this is again, a great honor. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Harper?
Coach Vinnie, you know, Alonka called coach, right? She was a heck of a basketball player and a heck of a coach. So it all blends in with her total personality. Congratulations to all three of you ladies, especially you, Michelle. Thank you.
Congratulations again to our Teacher of the Year, Ms. Michelle Vinnie, and the all the students that we recognized tonight, all of our student recognitions and staff recognitions. Again, congratulations to each of you, and thank you for joining us tonight. We will transition now to the hearing of any delegations, presentation of any written communications or petitions regarding the super. We'll, we'll hear the presentation of any delegations. So at this time, I'm going to ask our clerk to present the protocol for public speaking.
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues and refrain from personal attacks. Speakers shall not address matters involving individual employees or students as these topics may violate confidentiality and are not appropriate in a public forum. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide what matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers. We'll begin tonight, we have one speaker signed up that I'm aware of, and that would be Mr. David Dietrich.
Good evening, Mrs., good evening, Mrs. Mugler, members of the school board, Dr. Shiflett. My name is David Dietrich, 139 Wilderness Road in Hampton. And by the way, Mrs. Mugler, you look particularly lovely this evening. And I would like to congratulate you, Mr. Kilgore, on your very well-run campaign. And look forward to interacting with you for several more years. Now I would like to address your goals for Hampton City Schools, Mr. Kilgore, and what they're doing for Hampton's children. First of all, there's maximize student achievement. What does this mean and how is it measured? According to GreatSchools.com, Hampton City Schools receives a grade of four out of 10. I don't think this represents greatness. Since the principal method of rating schools by Great Schools, and I think you, Mr. Kilgore, is standardized testing.
Mr. Dietrich, I'm going to ask you to refrain from addressing specific board members. Address the body, please.
The, Mr. Kilgore's goals are posted on the Hampton City Schools website.
Mr. Dietrich, our, our protocol requires and requests speakers to address the body.
Okay, I will make Mr. Kilgore's goals than the student, the school board's goals. The school board's goals then are, the principal method of rating those goals is standardized testing, which shows that this is really out of touch with the real world. There's not a single employer or college who will ask a graduate what his SOL test scores are. Maximum achievement, according to the school board, is a low average SOL test score. This means that Hampton City School students are more than likely to graduate without real job prospects, much less expectation to enter and graduate from college. Next, the school board has the goal of increasing school safety. What does this mean and how is it measured? Is it based on the number of cameras and locked doors at our schools? If a bad guy with a gun decides to visit upon the children of Langley Elementary School, for example, the same death and destruction that was wrought at Sandy Hook, who would stop him? The answer is nobody, as we have no armed security at our elementary schools. Locked doors can easily be defeated by guns, as was demonstrated by Adam Lanza at Sandy Hook. That means Hampton City Schools elementary students are deliberately left defenseless by this school board. What will be your excuse when there is slaughter? Next, the school board has the goal of increased parental and community involvement. What does this mean and how is it measured? Is it based on those speaking at board meetings? Since few, if any, people ever address this school board concerning issues that affect all schoolchildren, this goal is failing in a big way. Where is the engagement? Or does parental and community involvement simply mean having public meetings where a Hobson's Choice is offered, whereby no alternative is ever offered? This means our families and communities are stuck with an unaccountable and unresponsive school board who are only interested in perpetuating a broken system. Next, the school board has the goal of attract and retain the highest quality employees. What does this mean and how is it measured? Is it based on college standing or performance? How do you measure highest quality? Since it is a superlative, that means there must be some basis of comparison. Are Hampton City School employees at least better than those in Norfolk, for example? What are, what makes Hampton City Schools outstanding? In what way is it better than other school systems? Saying something over and over doesn't make it so. Finally, this school board has a goal of ensure that the fiscal and physical resources of the division are effectively used. What does this mean and how is it measured? Since we've never had a line item review and justification of our school system budget, this goal cannot be assessed. Instead, the administration has given carte blanche. As a result, we have often seen poor accounting practices applied to our school system reporting. There simply doesn't appear to be any reason for our elected school board as a result. I don't expect my issues to be addressed in any meaningful way by this school board, since the future of our children doesn't really seem to concern them. Just look at the current example, the current agenda, for example. And one last item, by the way. It appears that the cost of the one-to-one initiative buying iPads is just about the same cost as letting the custodians go. I thank you very much for your time.
We move on to our consent agenda tonight. It consists of items 5.01, 5.02, and 5.03 and 4. Personnel report on number 1408, school board meeting minutes of April 2, 2014, minutes of the special meeting of April 16th, and the expulsion of 2013-171. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Henry that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Is there any discussion? There being none, we'll move on to Ms. Bowers calling for the vote. Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler? Aye. Motion carries. Our next item for business tonight is the superintendent and staff reports. And so I will turn things over to Dr. Shiflett for those presentations.
Thank you, Ms. Mugler. Tonight, we have a report about our HEAR attendance initiative. And as you recall, we've been working on this for a number of years as part of our graduation work. And we have some very, I think, very good results to report to you. Also embedded within this report will be an update on a pilot that we've been doing this year. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Cooper.
Good evening, Dr. Cooper.
I'm really excited to be here tonight to bring you up to date on where we are with the HEAR initiative. I'll first explain that it is not an acronym. It means HEAR, like when you're calling attendance. We had an opportunity, we were called to the state to present to the Virginia Department of Education and some judges and some school superintendents because the things that we're doing in this division really do set us aside from other divisions and put us a rung above. And so we thought we would share that with you. I wanted to start out with the mission because the first five words really ring true for this initiative. In collaboration with our community, Hampton City Schools ensures academic excellence for every child, every day, whatever it takes. And we're very used to the back end of that. We hear it all the time. But this is a shining example of the front end of that because it truly is an initiative that involves lots of people in our community. The agencies, of course, are Hampton City Schools, but it's also the city of Hampton, it's the Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court, it's Court Services, it's the Community Services Board, or CSB, and a variety of other agencies that come into play here. The focus, the what, is intervention and support. This is another thing that sets us aside. In many places, compulsory attendance is just that. It's compulsory, it's a legal obligation, it's in the code, and, and the stance is really enforcement. What we've worked to create here is intervention and support so that we solve the problem, help families solve the problem, get young people in school. But we really don't want people to go to jail, we really don't want people to go to court, if, if at all, we can avoid that. And the why of it is that truancy is really just a symptom. For younger children, they don't take the car keys and drive off and skip school for a day. It's often a symptom of challenges at home and a family needing support in a variety of ways. For older students, it can be a problem that students having in school. But anyway, it's just an early risk factor. It's one of the four things that's associated by the National Dropout Prevention Association with dropping out of school, and it's been correlated with school dropout as early as sixth grade. So, let's talk a little bit more about it. It's pretty much a simple program. It focuses first on engaging families at the school level. We're expecting schools to set high expectations to let young people know that it's important that they be there, that we miss them when they're not there. Another key principle is that attendance is everybody's business. It's not the attendance clerk in the front office, it's not just the administrator, it's the teachers, it's the nurse, it's anybody who can interact with a young person and have them understand that it's important that they come. Consistent monitoring and reporting is another key feature, and that's both at the district level and at the school level. But it's, it's very key, we have some reports that will tell us automatically when students hit the third unexcused absence. And buildings can run that at the first unexcused absence, or the second unexcused absence, so that we can intervene before it's too late or before the, the consequences are catastrophic. Frequent and meaningful communication is our expectation of schools reaching out to families, letting them know what's going on, and, and asking them to come help us with the problem. And then also user-friendly ways for families to report absences to us. We used to have a policy that said that the notice had to be in writing. Even if Mrs. Henry called the school principal in the morning and said, Victoria is sick, she's got the flu, I'm going to take her to the doctor, we would wait until she wrote a note saying the exact same thing before we made it excused. So we now accept if the, if we can get proof that it is in fact the parent we're talking to, we accept a verbal excuse for the absence. Let's see. The second key part of it then is support for families. So if all those things still have young people missing school, we want to work to do something different. So you're used to hearing about student intervention teams for areas of behavior or academics. We're often calling groups of people together to talk about those two things. But in this division, we actually call groups of people together to talk about attendance problems and what we can do about them. We have support from the Community Services Board and the Youth Parent Empowerment Program, intervention and support for students who are having emotional or psychiatric issues. If those two, if the supports at the school are, are not as effective as we need them to be, our next step is really a corrective action plan, which is done in collaboration with the family. We ask them to come in, we ask them to talk with us about really what's causing the student to not attend school. And then we try to connect that family with a system of supports. If it does not work, and they continue to miss school, then we still have one more step before we go to any enforcement mode, and that's going to a truancy response team. And at that meeting, everybody's around the table, all of the different agencies. So if it turns out that there's a problem in my family where I need help solving a problem because my electric bill hasn't been paid and I can't wash clothes for my children and that's why they're not coming, there are agencies at the table that can help solve that. The whole, the whole purpose of it really is, again, connecting the family with whatever support it needs so they can be successful. We do have the legal intervention step. If, if folks are non-compliant or not able to be compliant with what's set in motion by the truancy response team, everybody makes an agreement as to what we're going to do, both on the school side, on the agency side, and on the family side. If that, if the child continues to miss school, then we go into a legal intervention mode. And our Student Services Department, Sonia McKeithen and Sean MacIver, step up to take this forward to court. Again, depending on the, the case status, the age of the child, and the details, it will either be a petition filed for a child in need of services, it's called a Chin's petition for truancy, or they'll go to a magistrate to issue a warrant for the parents for contributing to the delinquency, for failing to follow through on what needs to happen. But the big issue is, is that the goal of the court, when they get to court, is still to connect the family with a system of care. We have a very involved Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court is really worried about solving problems for families so that kids can end up in school and end up being successful. So we launched this thing in 9:10 is when there were discussions about this. And in 10:11, we were ready to roll out initial training, materials, and what the process was going to be. 11:12 really began the implementation and continued training. And then in 12:13, as the implementation continued, we decided that we needed to take a look to see how that implementation was going and whether it was having an effect that we thought it was going to have. Because it was having no effect, and we were having people do all this work for nothing, then we needed to rethink that. So, we worked with the University of Virginia, YouthNext is, is an agency within the Currie School of Education that works on establishing and documenting best practices for young people in youth development. And they worked with us. And the first thing that we looked at was effects on our behavior. So this is just a little graphic representation of what happened as far as corrective action plans at the school level. As you can see, the first year, when we were just getting brochures out and letting people know what we were doing, we didn't have corrective action plans. The next year, over 1,400, and then the following year, nearly 2,000. But the slide that you're really going to like is what did all that do in terms of truancy reduction? And that is a picture worth a thousand words. When the initiative started in 2010-11, close to 6,200 young people missing six or more days unexcused from school. The column on the right, the 5248, are those that are of school age because compulsory attendance only applies to young people who are five years of age up to 17. Once you're 18, you can legally, in the state of Virginia, leave school, and there's nothing that we can do about it from a legal standpoint. We don't exempt those young people from the phone calls, from the meetings, and all of the interventions. And so schools take action on everybody, but it's important for us to know that if we get to that legal stage, we can't move forward with a young person who's outside of compulsory attendance age law. You can see, as we move through that perfect downward trend, it's a beautiful thing so that we have cut by close to 50%, just eyeballing it, probably more like 45, the, the rate of truancy in our schools. There were some other findings. We looked at data. The first one is a little bit of a no-brainer, that truancy, when we looked at our data set of all the information we had on young people, and could connect it with the climate survey data, it, it clearly showed us that truancy is correlated or associated. There's a relationship between feeling connected to a caring adult at school and truancy. Again, we don't know whether that's chicken or egg, whether the reason I don't come to school is I haven't gotten that kind of relationship, or the reason I don't have that kind of relationship is because I'm not at school as often. But the biggest thing that was an eye-opener was the difference on average between groups of students who are truant and groups of students who are not truant in their academic performance, particularly on standardized tests for which we are held accountable by the state and federal government. And the 23 points in reading on average, close to 18 points in math. And that, if we didn't think attendance was important, that is enough for every parent, child, and teacher to know that it really does matter that students are in school. So YouthNext wrote us a very nice report, and they gave us some key recommendations. The report was about 60 pages. I didn't bring that all tonight. I know you're disappointed, but I will just hit the high points on the recommendations. And the first was that we needed to focus on early grades. Again, this is a commonly known fact, but it was proved by our data set that attendance patterns really are set. patterns really are set in pre-K, kindergarten, elementary school. By the time a child gets to secondary, we can still intervene, but it's much, much harder. They said that we needed to create a sense of urgency around this. I said, "23 points and 18 points in reading and math, that creates a sense of urgency for me, and we will share that information." They said we needed to blanket everyone, again, with information, and I guess Ms. Galata could tell us how many times in marketing and advertising someone has to hear something before they internalize it, and how many different ways. So, we're working on a video collection now, and additional print media, and other ways that we can get this information. If you look at the Student Services website, there have been some changes there. And then the most interesting thing they told us was, "Think about what it would be like if you could implement it perfectly. What are the barriers to that perfect implementation? Pick a site and see if you can do that, and then see what the effects are." So, we bumped it up a step. We've improved our monthly monitoring in terms of information that we get to schools, letting them know how many students they've had, that meta-definition of truancy, how many conferences they've had, how many CAP meetings they've had, and is there an imbalance between the number of problems that we have at my school and the number of interventions I've championed? For schools where there is an imbalance, the Student Services team have made house calls rather than phone calls or calling somebody's supervisor. They've sat with a leadership team and said, "What can we do to help?" And modeled best practice and gotten resources for them. We're working on a training project where training could be asynchronous, so that if you need to know how to enter it into Power School, there's a little segment of that. If you need to know why we're doing this, there's a segment of that. That should be ready to roll out this summer, so it'll, it'll definitely be online by the fall. And then we picked a school for the perfect implementation, and that is the Basset Pilot Project. And we've invited the principal of Basset Elementary School, Bryce Johnson, and his colleague, Jennifer Seal, to come talk about that project because it really is very exciting.
I appreciate you calling us perfect, there, Dr. Cooper. Members of the school board, Dr. Shiflett, thank you for allowing me to speak. I always get excited, I gotta use this clicker. I always get excited when I get a chance to talk about the BASE program at Basset, and just, even though it's, it's in its first pilot year, just some of the progress that you'll see, I think you'll be excited about the success we've, we've seen from it. First off, what does it stand for? BASE stands for Basset's Approach to Success and Empowerment. All too often, particularly at schools, we find a barrier with school divisions, well, schools in general, seeing families with limited resources and then trying to get those resources to those families in a quick timeframe. And again, I think the quick timeframe is, is a crucial part for those resources because they're there, but unfortunately, there's a barrier with getting those resources to the families. And so, all too often, social workers, administrators are burdened with that job and huge caseloads, and so therefore, the access of that, that resource to the family unfortunately does not happen in timely fashion. So, I was approached from Dr. Shiflett and Judge Jay Duggar about a possible pilot over the summer of 2013 that would, would actually put a, a Department of Human Services worker directly at the school to work on some of this connection with resources for these families in need. And boy, did it take off. When we look at the BASE program, I talked about this barriers. Initially, it starts with attendance. Ms. Seal, who was placed at, at the building, actually would, would check attendance daily with the administrators and really look at those chronic offenders of absenteeism. Then, from that, that concern, we would, as Dr. Cooper alluded to, go into our, our CAP meetings, our corrective action plans, and follow the HIER guidelines. The thing that we would do in addition to that was, we would take that sit meeting, the student intervention team, and kind of grow it into what we call a super-sit meeting, which took many shareholders, such as schools psychologists, social workers, CSB, Ms. Seal, administrators, and the parents. And we would all sit at a table and look at what's going on at Basset that's working and not working, and then what's going on at home that's working and not working. And so, we took the step outside of just the four walls there and placed them into the four walls of their homes. And then we really talked about what can be done to get the kid at school. Because I truly believe it's one thing to get them here in the building, it's even another entirely positive thing to get them happily in the building. And so, really, really pushing for that support and those resources. And so, Ms. Seal would take the reflections from that meeting and then proceed to try to bridge those resources and bring them quickly into the family, you know, within days rather than months, as we've seen in the past unfortunately. And so, I want to have Ms. Seal come up quickly to talk about some of those resources that I alluded to. So, Ms. Seal.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jennifer Seal again, and I am with the Department of Human Services and very excited to be a part of the BASE program where we are empowering our families and supporting them. At our super-sit meeting, we're able to identify the strengths and needs of both the parent and the family, and then implement a plan to ensure their success. There are several resources in place. We had a student that has had a lot of behavioral concerns, which is, was affecting academics and self-esteem, and she said, "I really like to dance. I feel good. I feel good when I dance." So, using our Family Assessment Planning Team, I was able to request a therapeutic recreation program that taught her dance. But not only was she getting dance, she was getting coping skills, behavior management skills. She was being taught to respect authority. She has come a long way with this program and has also learned dance, and as well as her self-esteem. With case management, I've used the Hampton Newport News Community Service Board to do refers, referrals to have the case manager come in and advocate, link, and coordinate for the family, both in the community and in the school. Therapeutic mentoring, we have a lot of students that have come from broken homes, parents that are incarcerated, even parents that have been murdered. So, with therapeutic mentoring, we're using those positive role models to teach appropriate social schools how to interact, both in the community as well in the classroom, and that mentor's developing a plan as well with that student to set goals for them to achieve. Parent support and financial assistance. I do several home visits because when I'm making the phone calls to address the unexcused absences, they're either disconnected or unable to leave messages or, or a variety of reasons. So, I go out to the house. I actually had a parent who was very hesitant to tell me that her electric had actually been turned off for over a year. So, there was obviously hygiene concerns, and that student wasn't attending school because of that. They couldn't wash their clothes. They were using baby wipes to bathe. Being from Department of Human Services, I was able to link her up to financial assistance to get that electric bill paid and, and turned on within, I think, two days. We also put a family support worker in the home to work with mom on parenting and budgeting and managing her household. Clothing and food assistance. It's very sad I've received a phone call that mom said, "I just, I couldn't send him to school. I didn't have any clothes, any clean clothes. We have two pairs of khaki pants." And she did not want that child to be reprimanded for not wearing that school uniform. I said, "I'll take care of it. Send him to school tomorrow." I made a phone call. I work with our family engagement specialists. I work with the PTA's clothing closet with Hampton City Schools, and I got several pants, uniform tops, belts, everything that child needed, and he has been in school every day, every day since. And mom was very grateful and thankful. Surprisingly, there are several parents and students that do not have any insurance. I'm able to sit down and go step through step to get that Medicaid application completed. I then can transport them over to the Department of Human Services to cross that application, and then follow up to ensure that Medicaid card is put in the mail, and they can get their physicals and dental work completed. I help with them arranging transportation through our, the Medicaid cab to make sure that, that what needs to be done is getting done. And then with the super-sits, we have found a lot of mental health concerns. So, I have used local agencies and programs to get psychiatrists and psychological referrals completed, and once those doctors make recommendations, I then go with the parent to Vicap to advocate, or send them on to a therapist or medication management. So, there's a lot of linking, collaborating, working together to get these families where they need to be, and, and the kids happy, and then in school. Mr. Johnson is the data guy, and I'm going to have him do the next slide.
Thank you. Looking at the overall results, just to kind of finish off, and again, this is through this point in the school year, so we're still kind of waiting for the SOE scores to come back. But as of right now, we see 10% overall growth for student performance for, for Basset compared to last school year. And then also, this is a huge number, the reduction in truancy cases, these are the students that have the five or more unexcused absences, has dropped from 81 to nine. That is a 20% decrease roughly. That nine represents 2% of our population. So, to be able to see all those kids now at school, and to see them being successful academically overall, I think is a huge testament to the success of the program. And it's, as I said before, it's, it's definitely producing kids with smiley faces at school, happy and ready to learn, which makes shareholders ready, or stakeholders happy as well. So, appreciate your time and listening.
Shareholders as well, too.
We'll end it with just the one slide that, that there isn't a solution to truancy. It's like there isn't a solution to dropout. There, there are 75 reasons for both of those things and 75 different solutions. And when we help family, families resolve the things that get in the way of students coming to school and being successful, they really are here, and I think the team at Basset is, is prime testament to that, but also the work of school administrators, teachers, attendance clerks, folks all over the school division, to bring those numbers down like you've seen them come down in the slide that shows our truancy results. We'd be glad to entertain any questions about the HIER initiative or about the BASE project.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Wow. We received the presentation online before we come to our meetings, but I think tonight, your old presentation of the data and the information that Ms. Seal's shared with us certainly puts up just an incredible picture of the work that's been done there and the results that are occurring as, as, you know, a result of everybody's combined efforts. So, so impressed with your presentation tonight, and thank you for sharing in such detail with us what's happening there. Are there questions from other board members? Mr. Pearson?
Dr. Cooper, you know, I don't usually ask for a lot of details.
Yes, sir.
But this is intriguing. How do you come up? I'm, I'm a numbers person to a certain extent. How do you come up with the number of six-plus unexcused absences constitutes truancy? And with, with, with the tremendous effort that the school system and the court system and all the other community agencies, the work that they're doing, how do you know when a student has the first unexcused absence? It's an isolated incident? Or it's the first day of chronic absenteeism? So, how do you know when to get involved?
The system will generate notice to the school staff at the third. They do have the ability to run an unexcused absent reports and set the parameters for that report, so I could look for just real trouble and set it at 10 or more. I could set it at the legal definition. I could set it at three, or I could set it at two or even one. I do know that some schools, no names mentioned, Basset, really began, I want to say aggressively in a nice way, even unexcused tardies, that they began with tardies, and they actually had corrective action plan meetings for tardies. So, you can, with the Power School system, you can set the report to get any information from you, but the, the normal point at which it comes onto everybody's radar is the third.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Henry?
That's some happy data, isn't it? And it's just plain happy data. But it's just incredible to me that if you have a truancy rate of almost 20% of your student body, and you cut it down to 2% of your student body, and you can see in less than one year, a 10% growth in test results and student academic progress cumulatively having that truancy rate, I mean, that's, that's this year they haven't lost, and then build on it next year they don't lose, and the next year, I mean, the, the results are just gonna, it's gonna be geometric. It's just fantastic. So, thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Kelgor?
Thank you for the presentation. Amazing results. My, my question relates to, okay, so, had the amazing results at Basset as a pilot program, what's the division's plan for rollout beyond pilot?
All right, then. We have to give some credit to the other agencies to truly, in collaboration with our community. That's why we started with a mission statement, because really, it was the work of the Juvenile and Domestic Relations Court judge that has partnered with us that went to the city and said, "We need some help." So, I think the position was actually funded through court services funds and savings from JDI, and there is conversation occurring now to expand the pilot. I can't tell you the state of those conversations. I am not involved in them, but our advocates in our community continue to press on our behalf for more resources to solve problems for families so that kids can be successful in school. And I think that's a, a pretty marvelous community to live in. Thank you.
Mrs. Smith?
Yeah, I'm just, I was so excited because I went to and visited with Basset last week and talked to Mr. Johnson, and he told me about this program, and I couldn't wait to have y'all come and share it with everybody because, I mean, we all know that students that have the issues like Ms. Seal described, they can't focus on learning. They have much bigger problems that they're dealing with. So, but you're able to know what's out there, put that together, really focus on the whole child and their needs, and individualize it, like with the dance and, and whatever it is that meets that child's needs is, is truly remarkable. So, thank you so much for what you're doing. I want to make sure this is throughout the whole division because it just makes sense. But thank you. And I do have one question for you, Dr. Cooper, because I always have a question for you.
Yes, Mrs. Smith.
That one chart about with the six or more unexcused absences, and you showed the drops. I know we changed the policy last year to no longer count suspensions, suspensions as unexcused absences. So, how much of an impact did that policy change have on that data versus?
Those were, we excluded suspension data. When we ran the original numbers, I, I asked the IT staff to pull data that separated, and they, they gave me total absences, excused, unexcused, and discipline-related. And so, that chart is only unexcused absenceless.
Perfect.
So, it's a pretty amazing change.
Very amazing. Thank you.
Mr. Harper?
Dr. Cooper, two questions, really.
Yes, sir.
One is, do you think this template, this application for Basset would work in the middle school and the high school level?
I, I do. I know that our, our administrative teams and our student supports, our professional school counselors, nursing staff, all those folks at secondary level are really working to solve these problems. You would be amazed how many homeless children's laundry we do at our schools, you know? So, our folks are working to solve these problems, but the, it's very difficult to connect. I know this from my own personal experience as an administrator. It's very difficult to connect with a caseworker. You call social services and you leave a message because the caseworker's out in the field, then he or she calls you back, but you're in a classroom, or you're in an IEP meeting, and you can play phone tag for a number of days. And so, I do believe it would work because the immediacy of the response is really what sets this aside, and that would work for any age child.
I think you have a little bit more feedback or input from parents of smaller kids when they reach middle school and high school, sometimes the connection point of communication gets to be a little bit more difficult. The other question is, was Basset chosen because of chronic truancy problems, or what was the reason Basset was chosen?
It was chosen because there were some academic struggles, and it was also chosen because they had 81 elementary school students with six or more unexcused absences, and that, that was a part of it. And then the other piece of it is that they had a staff that was working very hard and was receptive to receiving some additional help to try to make those changes, and, and an administrator who was supportive, because we wouldn't want to put a program into a school where, where it would not be perceived as supportive. So, the combination of those things, academic struggles, number of unexcused absences, a staff already working hard to solve the problem and needing some extra assistance, and then a leadership team that was well behind the effort. a leadership team that was well behind the effort were why we targeted this school, and I think it was a good pick.
Other questions or comments from board members? Okay. Thank you so much for the presentation tonight. Dr. Shiflett?
Our last report for the evening is our monthly financial operations report. Mrs. Scott?
I just want you to know, that's a really hard act to follow.
Agreed.
So, I'll make mine short. Good evening. I'm here to give you the results of our operations as of March 31, 2014. Our year-to-date revenues as of that point were $138,720,367. Our year-to-date expenditures and encumbrances combined at that point were $136,965,849. This is on target for this point in the year and based on a March, a projected March ADM, budgeted March ADM of 20,150 students. Our final March ADM is in, and it came in at 20,227 or 77 students over what we budgeted, which is 0.4%. And is showing a higher retention rate from the fall membership than we have seen in the past. So, it's a good sign that the retention of our students is trending up. Based on the final March ADM and updates from the special session of the General Assembly, we anticipate overall additional revenue of $734,000. We may have to come back to you for additional revenue appropriation, but it's largely dependent on how our Medicaid and Impact Aid collections go. Because those are so sporadic and sometimes tend to come in very late in the year, it could be that they're under and these are, and the other revenues are over. So, we won't know for some time yet whether we're going to need an additional revenue appropriation, probably sometime in June. But rest assured, we'll be back if we need that additional appropriation. Any questions?
Questions from board members on the finance report?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Shiflett?
Excuse me. That concludes our reports.
Thank you so much. We'll move on to other items for action. And we begin with the Special Education Annual Plan. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the Special Education Annual Plan. Is there any discussion? I'm sorry, Ms. Bowers, that motion was by Mr. Harper and seconded by Mr. Pearson. If there's no discussion, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote? Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. We move on to item 7.02, which is the adoption of language arts and mathematics textbooks.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Madam Chair, I move that we approve the adoption of the presented language arts and mathematics textbooks.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we approve the adoption of language arts and mathematics textbooks. Is there any discussion? I was just going to make the comment that these books were presented to us at our last meeting. If there is no other discussion, Ms. Bowers, would you call for the vote? Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. We move on to item 7.03, which is the minutes of the school board meeting of April 23, 2014. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move approval of item 7.03.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Smith that we approve the minutes of the school board meeting of April 23, 2014. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote? Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Abstain.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Abstain.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. We move on to items 7.04 through 7.07, which are all revisions of school board policies. Is there a motion to approve these revisions as a group?
Madam Chair, I move approval of item 7.04 through 7.07.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mrs. Henry that we approve the revision of school board policy IL testing programs, the revision of school board policy IKEB, acceleration, the revision of school board policy GBBC, which is electronic mail, email, and the review of school board policy GBBD, social media use. Is that review and revision? Or that was just up for review, perhaps? Okay. We just reviewed that particular policy at our last deliberation.
It actually is a new policy, Madam Chair, so it is for adoption as a new policy.
Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote? Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. And that, of course, was a motion for revision of three policies and the adoption of one new policy. That concludes our action items. We'll move on now to our deliberation portion of the agenda. We only have one item in that area tonight of deliberation, and that is going to be deliberation with regard to the resolution of Brown versus the Board of Education anniversary. The anniversary is on May 17, and that, of course, is the commemoration of the historic unanimous decision of the United States Supreme Court in Brown versus the Board of Education. Is there any comment or question from board members with regard to the adoption of this There appearing to be none, this item will be on our agenda for business next time, or, Ms. Bowers, would we need to move this forward so that we could have it in place before the 17th?
I would suggest you move it if that's the will of the board.
Okay. So, is there a motion from a board member for moving this item to action?
Madam Chairman, I move that we amend our agenda and move item 8.01 to action.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we move item 8.01, the resolution regarding Brown versus the Board of Education. It's the 60th anniversary commemoration resolution. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote? Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. And so, now, this item is moved to our agenda for action. Is there a motion with regard to the approval of this resolution?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the signing and publishing of the resolution commemorating the 60th anniversary of the Brown versus Board of Education decision.
Second.
It's been moved by Mrs. Henry and seconded by Mr. Kilgore that we adopt the resolution commemorating the 60th anniversary of the historic U.S. Supreme Court decision of Brown versus the Board of Education. Is there any discussion? There being none, Ms. Bowers, will you call for the vote? Mr. Pearson?
Aye.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Harper?
Aye.
Ms. Henry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Ms. Mugler?
Aye. Motion carries. This concludes our business portion of the meeting. We'll move on to our informational items for tonight, and I will just simply announce that the next meeting, the Hampton School Board will be held on Wednesday, May 21, and that will be our work session. It will be held in the Rupert Sargent Building at 1 Franklin Street. Dr. Shiflett, do you have any items to share?
Just a couple. Today was School Nurse Appreciation Day, so I do want to extend our sincere appreciation for all of our wonderful school nurses and all the work they do each and every day for our young people. Tomorrow night is our PTA Annual Awards Dinner at the Crown Plaza at 5:30. The 21st Annual Third Congressional District Art Competition will be held Monday, May 12, at 5:30 PM at the Downing Grove Center. And I do want to extend my congratulations to all of our Teachers of the Year, and in particular to Ms. Michelle Venney. She has done an amazing job, has had all of the ladies tonight, but congratulations to her. And a very special Mother's Day to everyone this weekend.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Are there other items of information that board members would like to share with us? Mrs. Smith?
Two things. One, this past weekend was the Hampton Repair Blitz in the Magnolia neighborhood, and my husband and I do that every time as team leaders, and it was once again a wonderful event with the city of Hampton. And I believe our clerk, Ms. Bowers, was there as well. And it was just a great thing to see everybody from the city coming together and making such a difference in our neighborhoods. And hopefully, we can do it at a school again next time. We'll have to talk to them. And secondly, it was really fitting to have the Teachers of the Year tonight because it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and just want to shout out to all of our incredible teachers out there in the city. And I know I've been visiting schools, and there's a lot of car washing going on, and luncheons, and breakfasts, and massages, and so many things that our teachers deserve so much. So, thank you for all you do.
Other informational items from board members? Okay. There being none, and no further business to come. I'm sorry, Ms. Bowers? Yes. There is no further business to come before this board in our public session, but we will be reconvening in a closed session as a board to deliberate related to our earlier meeting. So, we'll reconvene in five minutes as a board in closed session, and if there's nothing further to come before this board, this meeting is adjourned.